2023 meeting of the Tonicohasset Select Board. The, before we get started, I just want to do a little bit of an introduction for the virtual meeting part of this. This meeting is carried on Zoom. It's also carried on 143. People who participate on Zoom can ask questions. And we do have one meeting, one member who is not here, but is virtual, which means the whole meeting is completed as virtual. What that means is all of our votes are roll call votes. Anybody who wishes to speak has to identify themselves by their name and their address. And that's for everybody who speaks. Anybody who was speaking, just remember that. We need to know that. And to start with a roll call vote. Corey Evans, you're virtual on Zoom.
Yep, Corey Evans is present.
Okay. Diane.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul.
Paul Grady present.
Jane.
Jane Haley different here.
Jack Grayton here. Okay. Just want to start the agenda with a pledge to allegiance, those who care to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic before its fates. One nation under God indivisible, with liberty and fair play. Okay. It is customary for your us to start our meetings with an opportunity for anybody in the community to speak to any issue that they feel is important. If you do speak, keep in mind that there'll be no discussion about that. The board may or may not choose to put it on a future meeting, but there'll be no discussion and the board will not be able to discuss or respond. Is there anybody who has a public comment? Justin, do we have anybody?
We do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay. We will start with a year interview from our fire department. Chief Dockley, will you front and center and?
Evening members. Also joining me is Chief Hernan.
Good evening. So we're excited about the role of the chief and the assistant chief. Actually, probably assistant chief's first official visit. And Justin has a quick video, which I think will start the evening and then we'll turn to the chief and assistant chief.
All right. For those on Zoom, the video is already uploaded to YouTube. It's youtube.com/tonicohasset. It's on one of the YouTube pages, youtube.com/tonicohasset.
Justin, thanks for the video. Very nice. Very nice. So yeah, it's been an interesting year. We're still growing and developing. My promotion, promotion of Chief Hernan and promotion of the members in the ranks. So we're teaching the lieutenants and the captains their duties and assignments. And we're in the process, again, we're hiring four individuals right now. And they're going through their background checks and evaluations, medical evaluations. And we're looking forward to bringing them on and showing them the tonicohasset. And also developing our current stat for professional development. The new officers have to go out to become trained in fire, fire, excuse me, fire instructors, fire officer one, captain's fire officer two. And so it's fun. And it's also challenging because I took over as the first assistant fire chief, developed that playbook, and now I'm handing it off to Assistant Chief Hernan. So I'm learning as I go because I'm transitioning a position that I developed and also learning a position that I just stepped into. So it's, it's, it's a lot of fun and it's interesting. Every day is interesting, but it's rewarding. Every day is rewarding.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you were to say what is probably the biggest challenge that you face and then the biggest positive?
So the biggest challenge is staffing. You know, when we, Assistant Chief, Assistant Chief Hernan and I started, there would be about 100 individuals for once, for one opening. Now we have four openings and we're barely able to get four individuals. So that's the biggest thing. But again, that's, that's throughout, you know, hiring is a big issue for whether you want to be a firefighter or police officer or go work for a private industry. Hiring is a big, a big, big issue for us. What was the other question? Sorry.
What's the highlight? What do you most like, uh, oh, acid or, or what do you see as the most positive thing?
A positive thing is the people of the community. You know, everyone welcomes us. We welcome them to come see us. And it's just the vibe of the community is the best, whether it's people who live here or even people come and visit because as Justin's video, the open house, some of the people didn't even live in town, but heard about the open house and they came to see the fire trucks and see the station and interact with, with the, the Ondry group. So it's everyone who wants to stop by and see us, come by and see us, say hi. And that's the best part of the job, interacting with people in that setting, in that setting. Sometimes we interact with people where it's a little stressful. But at the end of the day, when the outcome is positive, we usually get feedback and people thank us. So that's the other two is good. No, thank you from the people.
Thank you. I think some of our select board members, they wanted, I'd like to say, Mr. Gray.
Chief, Assistant Chief, what I'd like to say is thank you. I think giving you guys the best thing that's down in the pit. No, thank you. Congratulations. I think you, thank you. Thank you.
I think we'll allow Mr. Gray to do with the collective handshake. I don't know. Jane.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. I know that there is ups and downs and potentially more downs than ups. So it's hard to always stay in terms of just the nature of emergency services, right? It's hard to have a community facing positive approach, which you have while also dealing consistently with stressful situations. And I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
Diane.
Yeah, I just obviously thanks from everybody in the community, but I'm in the process of moving my mom out of her like 65 year old house, or she's been in there for five years into senior living. And I'm sure you know, my dad was a firefighter, so I kind of grew up, you know, hanging out at the fire station and finding all these little badges from the old days and, you know, the Santa Claus visiting the ladies on delivery party. So it's, it's been really coming home. So watching that video, I got a little emotional. I do have one question, which is what you alluded to as being the biggest challenge. And I think we've kind of known this in all industries, but it's the hiring and kind of like, what is happening statewide or or beyond Hillhuston in terms of trying to recruit or develop, you know, young people's interests in paramedical and also in firefighting?
Yeah, it's, it's a challenge. And I think part of it is, is that COVID, I think scared a lot of people who want to work in the health industry away. Because what, you know, initially when COVID first came out, it was the biggest number they reported was the number of people who passed away. And they really weren't marketing well, you know, there are people that catching it and survive. And the number of deaths was the, the scared people away from working in the healthcare field.
And the hospitals were dealing with it. Yeah.
Getting into the hospitals, I think for the clinical aspect, I don't know if anybody knows, but John and I actually went to paramedic school together. Me with a three day old and a 14 month old and his son Tommy was born in November. So we had to drive three days a week to exit six or eight pound community college, which we got to know each other pretty well. But yeah, during the commutes and quizzing each other and everything, but you've, the paramedic besides the classroom is a lot of clinical. And I think the clinical hours were really set back because they wouldn't even allow family in some cases into the hospitals, much less students to get their innovations and the like. So everything is kind of, you know.
That's the holding back people that might be otherwise ready. With interest.
Yeah. Thank you, Diane. You guys do a very good job. And thank you. And I think it's very important that in a small town like Cohasset, that you are part of the community. And that's very, very important. The success of small towns like Cohasset and what makes Cohasset so special is that we're all part of the same community. And you do a very good job and, and the town appreciates you and thank you and keep up the good work. And share with all the other guys too.
We do.
All right. Anybody else? Anybody else like to comment?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I would say they have a fascinating training coming up at some point in the next several months. Nero's Law, she might have a quick second just to talk a little bit about that and the training that you guys are, are building. That's really interesting.
Yeah. So Nero's Law came into play after a police officer was killed in the line of duty down, down the Cape. Him and his canine was shot and the canine was injured. And they needed to be transported the canine to a veterinarian facility. And they said, we can put him in the fire department ambulance and transport. And it was like, no, 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 because it's a major violation of Office of Emergency Medical Service regulations. So they developed a law that now allows us to transport canine, police canines that are injured in the line of duty. And part of it's training, how to muzzle the canine properly and how to go about transporting them to a veterinarian clinic. So that's training we're having upcoming in the next couple of months. Part of it is we have to secure a veterinarian to do the training. So that's been a little tough. And we also have to secure a dog, an actual live dog. But we are working with Sergeant Redden of the to work with his dog. And now we're just trying to get veterinarian to train us. So.
Chief, I'd like to husky if you want.
I know you got a husky and you got a little guy too. Yeah. So, yeah, so that'll be upcoming and we'll have Justin in to follow us and provide another video of that, that type of training.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to licenses and permits, but before we do, little thing about protocol, we have a pretty full agenda. And we have some items that are going to be, have been discussed before. Okay. Let's proceed. We're going to have some ground rules, some of the things that we're going to be discussing this evening. We don't want to be here till 11 o'clock. If you've spoken or you have a position, you can state that position, but if you're going with the things that have already been discussed, you can bring it up. But we are going to move along. If necessary, the chair will reserve the right to keep, you know, discussions on any, on any particular individual discussion to two minutes. If it needs to go further, obviously we'll consider that. But we, we want to move the meetings along and, and also for the people who are watching at home, they don't want to hear the same point five or six times. So anyway, moving forward on, we have open space and recreation Earth Day, which is April 22. We, I see we have open space.
Hello, my name is Mary Ann, 1249 Regate Lane, and I represent Open Space. And we are talking about Earth Day today, and I thought I would bring you some flowers to encourage you to think about. Pretty. Thank you.
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was wondering why I was a little smart.
It is my wife's birthday.
Oh, you're all set.
And my understanding is this might help to warm up my home, but I don't think.
Leave the brief meeting. So like, as I said, I'm here on behalf of Open Space and Recreation Committee with my co-chairs. They are Adam Norman and Connie Asher right here. And we're requesting permission to host Earth Day. And Earth Day is a day, it's a global day to raise awareness of the earth's natural resources. And it's also part of the Cohasset's Open Space and Recreation Committee for requirement that we have Earth Day each year as part of our plan for 2019 through 2026. It's in our plan. And Earth Day, what we're hoping to do is on Saturday, April 22, it's from 9 to 2 PM. And we would have a staging area right outside the town hall and we would urge residents to come and get an area assignment. Then they would clean up different areas of town. And it would be a fantastic way to kick off the spring and celebrate Earth Day and just pick up the, the single use trash that's distributed and thrown out through, through the winter. Over the years, we've picked up ladders, we've picked up tires, tons of single bottles. I think last year we had 170 trash bags put into a dumpster and that's where people return it to a dumpster. And we were hoping for your permission for this.
How many bags do you think you picked up?
Last year we had 170 trash bags that filled the dumpster with us. And we usually have probably about 100 people that participate from young to old. So it's fun for little children as well to probably 70 year olds or 80 even, you know, just because of the different terrain that you're walking around as well. So people do the beaches, they do the trails, the brooks. You'd be surprised at how much trash that you find around Cohasset.
And we'll be pleasantly surprised how much cleaner the town were looks, you know, after that. There were any comments from the board?
I just want to say I participated a few, few different years with the Rotary Club and we were picking up along North Main Street down by the, the train station. And to your point, there's so much, but what, what killed me was how many nip bottles there were. And like, it's, it was all like I don't remember the name of it. I was going to say, but like almost all of them. But, but I know that Boston and Manhucket and a lot of communities are looking at planning the sale of nip bottles for that very reason, because they're, we talk about single use. It's like, you know, a three second swig and just little hundreds of them. So it's just something for the future to think about. But yeah. The Rotary Club has done a great job participating.
Well, I think it's a fantastic thing. I'd like to approve.
I'd second.
Yeah, motion made and seconded to approve it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote starting with Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Grady, I.
Jane Haley.
Jack Grayton and I, Corey.
Graham's eye.
Right, motion carried unanimously. Mary Ann and Connie, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
You're hiding behind Mary Ann.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving forward with public hearing. It's continued from February 28, 2023 for Atlantic Operating LLC doing business as Old South House at 14 Border Street. It's a new on premises, all alcohol restaurant, common business in our town councils here.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Goss, what is this here, a line?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to reopen the hearing, Mr. Landke?
If that's your practice, you, you can do that or just announce that the hearing is being called by the, by the chair. Yeah, this, this is, this is both being reopened and we called it by the chair. Last time we put it off, there was some incomplete information. Right. Good evening, the chairman and members of the board. Excuse me, for the record, my name is James Slanty and counsel to the town on licensing matters. And as you mentioned, this was a continual, this is a continuation from the hearing. It started back in February and there were some questions about the hours following that hearing. There were two other issues that were raised. One was whether or not they were seeking or going to operate as an annual licensee or as a seasonal licensee. And also there was a question regarding the fire suppression system. Apparently something happened to that. And there were questions as to what the status was. I had a conversation with the attorney for the licensee and who's on the call remotely here. And he confirmed that they are going to be operating as an annual license. Excuse me. Regarding the fire suppressant issue, apparently there was some repair work or something done to the fire suppressant system, but it is, I believe, operable, but they can address that this evening. The other issue, the main issue was the hours. There were questions on exactly what hours they were going to be operating. And it was unclear and the representative from the licensee was unclear. We had conversations back and forth on that between myself and the licensee's attorney. And that's something for the board to discuss this evening. They had indicated that they wanted to keep the same hours that prior business had, which according to that license, hours during which alcohol beverages may be sold Friday, I'm sorry, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM on weekdays. Sundays from 11:00 AM to 1:00 AM. Saturdays is not mentioned, but I believe that the prior establishment included Saturdays as the part of the weekdays. They also since then suggested new hours that they're seeking, which I understand is what's before the board tonight. And that is Monday to Thursday, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Friday to Sunday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And this requesting after July 1st, I'm sorry, after June 1st, Monday to Thursday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And weekends, Friday to Sunday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Those are hours that they are requesting. Ultimately, it's up to the decision of the board as to whether they want to approve the operation for those hours. That's what they're requesting. Under Massachusetts state law, can't prevent them from operating between 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM. The board has discretion to extend the time from 11:00 to 1:00, in some cases two. And also for starting hours, you can allow them to go earlier than 11:00 AM, as far back as 8:00 AM. But those hours for the, for the board to decide and also the board, I believe, has the ability to approve of the hours that they're requesting or not approve of them. The matter of the board taking into consideration of the public need in the community and how those hours may operate to, to serve that public need. So I know the licensee as a representative, Stigazda, Trinity Gazda, who's here remotely. And I'm sure if you want to speak, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board members may have. Jane.
Thank you, Attorney Landke. Just a quick question. I believe you said state law allows for them to operate from, excuse me, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM?
State law allows those hours that you can't prevent them from operating between 11:00 AM and 11:00 PM. However, a licensee can request different hours, but the hours that they request are up to the decision of the local licensing authority, which is the five members of the select board.
So all the hours they're currently requesting right now are within the default time period, so to speak.
They're, they're within the default time period. That's, that is correct. But it's up to the board to approve those hours or not.
If I could interject as well. Attorney Ryan Gosd, on behalf of the licensee, if I can speak briefly.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim, and good evening, everyone. Again, Ryan Gosd on behalf of the licensee from McDermott School, D. Miller, 28 State Street, Boston, Mass. With me on the call as well, I don't think they're panelists, so I'm not sure if they'll be able to unmute themselves. But also is Paul Silvia, who is the manager of record, and Tony Dochev, who is the general manager for Cohasset Hospitality. As Jim kind of gave the general background, this was previously continued for a further discussion with respect to the, the hours of operation. We did submit the updated paperwork requesting the closing hour of 1:00 AM Monday through Saturday and 1:00 AM on Sunday with the opening hour of 8:00 AM on Monday through Saturday and 11:00 AM on Sunday. This would be in keeping with the license that was formally at the site. And by way of background, the original plan when Atlantica Operating took over operations at the restaurant was for the license to actually be transferred as it previously existed with those same hours of operation over to the new LLC. But unfortunately, the former operator never renewed the license for 2023. So in effect, we're applying for a new license, if you will, as a housekeeping matter to replace what effectively lapsed. So we are seeking the 1:00 AM closing hour, but we did submit a quote unquote, operating schedule to the town. I believe that's what Jim was referring to, to kind of give a general background in terms of when the restaurant might close earlier during a typical business week. So they envisioned during the week that they might close down at 10:00 PM during a slow night during the week or 11:00 PM on the weekend, but they do want to have the option to stay up until 1:00 AM in the event they have special functions or it's a busy night during the summer. So they kind of have the flexibility to serve the public need. But other than that, there are no changes proposed from what's historically been there. But I believe, I think actually the only change is that formerly covered both 44 and 46 Border Street, and it's now been scaled back to just 44 Porter Street.
Jane.
I, I would suggest that the board move to approve the hours that are their normal operating hours. And if they want to deviate, they can come back for a one day license. Because I, I think it's more appropriate for us to, particularly where this is a neighborhood where you have a lot of residences very close to where El Salt House is. If this is typically what they use the winter license for, if they want to hold a special event, they can come back and seek permission for that special event. So I would be inclined to make that motion.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I would make that motion that we approve the hours after June 1st from Monday to Thursday, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then after June 1st from Friday to Sunday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Actually, I'd be inclined to do it as of whenever, not June 1st, but whenever we can first have that license start to kick in. So as of, as of today.
Second. We have a motion made and seconded. Certainly further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
You have Diane and then Corey.
He has, and I first let him go.
No, I'm sorry.
I forgot. No, I'm, I'm over here. So just for the, the after the June 1st thing, I was a little bit unclear. Was it a seasonal request, like you're going to go back and forth, or is this just because you're not ramping up? And the June 1st date is, to Jean's point, what you're going to be doing forever, just so we can make that clear in our motion.
It will be an annual license. I think that's just envisioned during the summer that they would be opening earlier when they envisioned being busier. And if I might, just to Jim's point earlier, I believe 11:00 PM is the earliest closing hour that a board can approve. I know the motion was for 10:00 PM, but I might also just state for the record that they would be willing to make a concession to 12:00 AM perhaps. And again, that 1:00 AM has historically existed at the site for many, many years without issue. And they would just look for the option to stay open without having come back to the board every single time that they have a very busy night. You know, so if 12:00 AM might be something that the board would be willing to consider, I think they would very much appreciate that, given that 1:00 AM has been there for many years.
Corey.
Yeah, I mean, my only, I think, point of clarification here for everybody is that, I mean, before the function of the space was, I mean, I think we all admit publicly very different, right? You had a, you had Atlantica there, which is why the license opened early. The issue with this board, I think, had was, you know, the, the early, the AM license was for a different operating model. And so while I do understand the idea of carrying it over, the fact that it is a different, you know, facility, I think it does kind of, it's why we're here today. So I, I also, you know, I've been on record previously about liking, preferring to shade on the side of earlier. So I support. So I support as well the most that that my colleague made.
I would just, maybe I need to withdraw my motion and make a new motion that. With respect to Monday to Thursday, it would be twelve PM to eleven PM to ensure compliance with state law.
We have a second for the recommended motion. And any further discussion?
I I pretty much had the same question earlier that Cory had, and I just want clarification that. That the June first event, these hours that are going to be on the annual license just kick in. And they don't, and there's no time period in particular that you're looking for the four to ten. Which is the only differential, Monday through Thursday. Want the license to read twelve to eleven.
They would like the opportunity to serve lunch. I think that, again, when we submitted those hours, it was really just to give a feel of when they might be busiest. But they do envision staying open for, you know, full day service. So I think that if. The license specifically reads that they can't open until four PM, you know, that would severely kneecap the business model.
I think the I think the the motion on the table is twelve to eleven, Monday through Thursday, Friday through Sunday, eleven to eleven.
And you intend to be open the entire year using those hours?
Correct, yes.
Jenny, further. I believe when the motion was originally made, there was some reference to applying for a seasonal, applying for one day license.
Yeah, they had an event that they want, that they knew they were going to host and want to come back for a one AM extension or something that came to that. We could address it as it came.
You could certainly adjust that on a case by case basis. But because the establishment at that address already has a liquor license assigned to it, they can't get a. What they call a special or a one day license under section fourteen of chapter one thirty eight, because. They already, you can't give a special, a one day license or a special license. To a place that already has a license assigned to it. However, as as you suggested. They could come in to the board in advance, sufficient time to get on the agenda for the board to consider whether to. Allow them to be open, you know, later than than eleven. For a special occasion on a case by case basis. I just wanted to 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 clarify that.
So we could do that later.
You could do that on a case by case basis.
For now, we have a motion made and seconded.
And there was some reference about these hours starting on on June first. If that's the pleasure of the board, you could certainly do that, but I just want the licensee to confirm. That. That's what they want to have the hours as of June first. Right now, what will be the hours? Will it be the same as those or some different hours?
I think just for clarity, I think it would make most sense, again, obviously, the license would prefer later, but I think just for clarity. And for uniformity, perhaps just eleven AM to eleven PM across the board.
Monday through Thursday and Friday through Sunday, eleven to eleven?
That would be year round, just year round, generally speaking.
Well, it's a year round license, so these would be the hours.
Right, I'm saying, right, I'm saying that the hours that were submitted were really just more for. Providing background information to the board and not necessarily suggesting that. You know, there should be a differentiation in terms of what's approved.
So you would like to.
Yeah, can I move to amend? Got a year round license, Monday through Thursday, eleven AM to eleven PM, Friday to Sunday, eleven AM to eleven.
We have a motion made and seconded for eleven AM to eleven PM. So any further discussion?
Is that seven days a week then?
Yes.
And year round. And the other thing that, just for the record, to to clarify. That the address is forty four Border Street. Because there were some references to forty six Border Street, but I believe. The old salt house is forty four Border Street. Is that correct?
Forty four is on the license application.
Right, right. If there was some reference somewhere, and I think it might have been because of the name of the applicants that had. Atlantic. A and S Restaurants, DBA Atlantic Restaurant. But just to be clear, we're talking about the license to be issued for forty four Border Street. You want to, is that correct?
Any other thing confirm?
That's correct, yes, forty four.
Okay, we have a motion, you know, made and seconded. So any further discussions?
One more clarification question. This is for the liquor license. This is.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, starting with Cory.
Cory Evans, aye.
Diane.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Well.
Paul Brady, aye.
Jane.
Jane nearly doubled up.
Jack Gray, nine motion carries unanimously. Now we'd like to move on to the common vitular. Anything, Attorney Lampy, that we should consider?
Nothing special about that. It doesn't seem to be a problem. Technically. A common vitular should be voted before the liquor license, because you can't get a. Liquor license for as a restaurant until you have a common vitular, but you're all doing it at the same time, same meeting, but just as a. Gets time around.
And the hours? Same hours?
I would move to approve the common vitular license with forty four Border Street for Atlantic operating LLC DBA Old Salt House from. Eleven AM to eleven PM, Monday through Fri- through Thursday. Friday through Sunday, eleven AM to eleven PM.
That motion made and seconded to extend the, to grant a common vitular license. For the aforementioned hours. Jenny, further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote. Diane.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Cory.
Cory Evans, aye.
Jane.
She nearly doubled up.
Well, Paul Brady, aye. Jack Gray, aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you. All right, moving on, Town Hall Project discussion and vote. On an article on the warrant for the annual town meeting. Now, Bill Lehrer is the chairman of the.
Can you just give us some clarification, because I have been not privy to what got it onto this. On the agenda.
Okay.
How we got here, since last week we got a vote.
Well, last week, we voted. To put it off until September. There is some lively conversation around town that perhaps it is best to. Just put it on as originally envisioned. For the spring. Town meeting. So we are revisiting that now. We can, anybody who voted against it earlier can make a motion. To reconsider if they voted on the earlier, on the earlier winning side on the motion. Also, according to Town Council, that we could just have a a new motion. So we don't have to do a vote to reconsider, we can just move directly. And the question is, do we want to have this on the. Agenda for the warrant for the spring, or do we want to put it off to what they propose? Fundraise or funding town meeting in early September. And we have, and Phil Lehrer, chairman of the Town Hall Committee, which. A week ago had asked us to. Do the. To do it. In to put it off, I mean, to do it immediately. And now I'm. Sensing that he might have, Town Hall Committee might have a different. Proposal, I thought, and Jane?
Um, yeah, I would just say for myself, because I knew that I was certainly interested in trying to get. More more of our ducks in a row. You know, I know that, for example, the Town Hall Building Committee had a public meeting on Wednesday. And they were interested in getting clarity, including from town meeting. I can't blame you. You've done a huge amount of work. I completely understand you. You have a shovel ready project. To your points that you've been drilling home over and over again, it just keeps getting more and more expensive the longer we wait. And also, I think in the fall. These other items that we're going to be considering are different. I don't believe, for example, that we necessarily need to do a special election for any of them. I think that upon reviewing the state statute, and this is a question I have for Chris, but we'll have to work it out later with council. I don't think we need to have a vote at the ballot for stabilization funds. And depending on how we can obtain funding for what are relatively modest fields and recreation projects by comparison. We might not need to have anything on the ballot for that either. And so. We don't have that luxury with Town Hall, though, because we're simply not going to be able. To fund the current project without a debt exclusion. It's just the reality of the math. And so. I think that the town is hungry. I know that, you know, my fellow select board members. Including you, Mr. Evans, you, you know, made a case, including to the public for action and getting this done. I'm willing to meet halfway and say, let's have town meeting and the voters decide. Particularly where we have a project that is pretty, ready to go. There's not going to be a discernible change by fall. In fact, it may still be the only thing on the ballot at a special election in the fall anyway.
Mr. Grady, and then we have the chairman of the.
I'm sorry? Thank you. Phil Lehrer, chairman of Town Hall, go. So just to bring you up to date, we we were stopped for several months last year and resumed in October. And we expressed that we have a very tight timeline to get to. The May for our May town meeting. That has now been affected. By a negative vote last week. We're in a position now where the consensus is. With our committee that there's just not enough time left. We've got four weeks left to present to all the committees that we need to present to. And have them digest what needs to be digested. We would like the opportunity to. Do a presentation at the town meeting to update the public where we're at and what our plans are for the fall, if that's possible. We would like from this board. A reaffirmation of the charge that was given us to do this project. And and maybe the only other thing is is. It's a it's a real challenge to stop and go on these projects if we get. You know, mixed. Direction on these. It it really affects the process of this this whole thing. And we just, we just hope that. This is taken into consideration with other committees.
Well.
Well, I always say to my one, myself personally, I was disappointed. And but with the pushback we received. From the town, the commentary the day after. It's something worth revisiting at the Town Hall is. Better up its own. I do agree with you in visiting the charge, but I would think that the Town Hall. We probably heard it from members of this own board. Kicking the can down the road, it's another article about kicking the can again and again and again. And. Here's one more thought. Don't want to kick the can down the road. You guys have worked awfully hard. My feelings on it, I'm standing. I think you guys have done a phenomenal job, but. I do agree in revising the charge, but I also think that it's important that we do give the people in town the opportunity to vote to support the project. And I would be all for putting it up and putting on the warrant for a spring meeting. I think we have the time to do that. And I think that if we. You know, maybe expedite the communities you have committed, if this board can help in any way, I think we should. But at this point in time, I'd make a motion to put the Town Hall. On the warrant, the spring topic.
Right, second.
We have a motion made and seconded with the Town Hall on the warrant. And for the town election. We'll move to discussion, Diane.
Thanks. Just a couple of comments. I, one of the thing, one of the takeaways I had last week was that we needed to have a ballot question on. Ready for April first. So if somebody could address when, you know, if it's those to town meeting. And when it passes, it would be on the, it would be on the ballot on May, whatever the election day is for. For the debt exclusion. So I want to make sure that we have enough time to do that, because I understand it was April first with the deadline.
Could we confirm, because I thought it was thirty five days prior to an election, which would leave a setting, probably.
Yeah, you, yeah, it's like, so you really have, this is the last meeting. And the language was provided to all of you.
And we have Cory.
Let Cory speak and then I'm going to.
Justin, could you do me a favor? I have to look over my shoulder to see Cory, and I don't want him to be ignored. So if you see his hand up, just.
Thumbs up, good, thank you.
Absolutely. Go Cory and then Jane.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm confused. I don't know if the public is confused. I mean, we had a very. You know, entertaining conversation last week about this. And it's with the board voted one way and now we're thirty seconds in. It's back on the agenda and people have switched their votes. It just, it feels kind of weird. Last week. You know, what I was trying to express to the board was. That these were ready and these were ready then. Advisory had it on their agenda to hear. So the capital budget. I mean, the drop dead date for the warrant, I think, is tomorrow. So last week was the week to do this. So I I I'm confused, because I I'd like to know what materially changed for my colleagues, where they changed things. And I'd also like to hear from the Town Hall Building Committee members a little bit more. I mean, Mr. Lear just referenced. That somehow the last week's vote had an impact. So. I I want to learn, you know, can we put this genie in the back in the bottle if we even wanted to? I mean, we can't go back in time, but we're here now. We've, you know, what kind of impacts? I mean, and if the board's going to do this. I I think we all are on the same page. We got to do it in good faith. So if the Town Hall Building Committee is saying there's damage, we don't know if we can recover. We should hear that. And if we still think we want to move forward, we got to do it unanimously. I mean, we can't do it this way and then do a split vote. I just, that just makes us look like we don't know what we're doing. So those would be my thoughts. You know, I'd like to hear more about what changed in the interim from my other board members, because again, this is a surprise to me. And then more from the Town Hall Building Committee about how this delay impacted them and if they can recover.
Jane.
So, Mr. Lear, I think that. I hear you on the timing. It's always been very tight as we try to stack up a huge amount of projects, try to get things done. And we always knew with Town Hall, it was going to be. A question mark right until up until the end, because we always knew that the actual bids were going to come in. From the process until literally days before town meeting. And so we always knew that the committees were going to have to address. This question, not really knowing what the actual bid amount was until. Days before town meeting, and we talked about this for months and months and months. And the committees have seen the town hall plans. Everyone knows. What the estimate is. Everyone knows what CPC funded. Everyone knows what free cash is. And so there's no real big, I think. Secrets as it comes to the money, so to speak. The bigger struggle has always been, well, what is the number? And how do we fund it through a debt exclusion in light of other projects out there? And so that has been. A real challenge, I think. But as as I said earlier, that it's still going to be the same challenge in the fall. And the only thing that we're likely going to. Have that is materially different is an increased cost. In the fall by waiting, from what I understand, from the committee. As well as more increased draw on town resources as we continue to sort of kick this question down the road. Cory, you put out a tweet that invited a huge ton of public comment. And you made your case that with the one shovel ready project, the board should be willing to consider that. And so. I think you're hearing from at least two of the members. That, yeah, we're willing to work with you. We're willing to try to see if we can get one of these projects done. We realize that this is a project that is important to the town. People have a lot of feelings about it. And fairness to the Town Hall Building Committee, who's trying to figure out what is the town's direction, not just the select board, but what is the town really feel? Because I'm sure. You want to really understand that, too. I think that the. I think that the time is right and that it's not going to get easier as we move month after month along with this project. It's probably just going to get harder because the cost will increase.
Paul and then Mark Cameron.
I also agree with my colleague and colleague, uh, by assuming one on the project, as we explained last week, is going to get more and more expensive. That's what we were told. And you know, it's more comparable to, people get more and more confused. And I will say this, I for one, it's a great note of every article on one four three on Twitter and responded to some of them. But I also agree, kicking, not kicking the can down the road and getting something done. And I had some disappointments in that. But I also agree that it should be unanimous, uh, unanimous vote, because some of the tweets put out pointed us in that direction. Um, so I would fully agree with Cory that it should be unanimous vote, because with those tweets put out by my colleague and answered by me and many others, uh, expressed their disappointment. And this board should know, at least this board member did. And I do know that the town hall committee has worked awfully hard. I think it's time that you deserve some clarification. That's what the town thinks. And give them the opportunity to decide and no more quote unquote kicking the can down the road. I hate that term, but uh it's used quite often and it's time this board maybe made an effort to you know, stop comparison. That's why the motion is placed, fans.
Mark Cameron, I might note that Mark is a member of the town hall committee.
Thank you. Um, last week we had three members of the committee vote against this and now they're having a different opinion of that. With not much of the facts changing behind the substance of the of the topic. Um, last week, we had just under five weeks before town meeting. We're one week ahead of here now. We don't have any meetings, any, any of our own meetings scheduled. Um, this was just brought up with very short notice. We're not on any agendas for capital budget advisory at this point. And we have less than four weeks before town meeting. Uh, in last week's public meeting, it was voted that town hall would not be on the warrant. And it is a public meeting, therefore the public, including subcontractor bidding market, has been made aware, whether we've told them or not, that this project was not going to be put on the warrant. So we have a potential to have tainted the subcontractor bidding market, because we effectively as a community told people that we were not interested in putting this on the warrant. And there is no way that in any vote that can come tonight that can reverse those actions and the consequences of those actions that were made by last week's vote.
Uh, Jane, back to Mark.
Um, so Mark, you saying that we shouldn't proceed with the town hall project at all because presumably the subcontractors would have that concern going forward into the fall?
No, because we, we, we still believe in this project. But we, we need to, we need to be able to plan and communicate and have this be a process where we're, where we're not being stopped and started and receiving mixed signals. We have been working diligently and hard to prepare this for annual town meeting. And last week we were told, no. And this week we're being told, yes. What is the message to the public?
Uh, Jane and Paul.
Well, I could answer that. The message to the public, I think, is that
You want to look over here?
That the board was listening. They heard you. They heard the public commentary. Uh, we've expressed that. They heard that quote unquote, the board kicked the can down the road again. Um, and they expressed their disappointment, including one of my colleagues. So we listened and put it up on the agenda. It wasn't planned for the agenda, but we wanted to put the process back on the board. Uh, because
That this
You have to look over there because you can't see the other ones.
This committee, the town hall committee, you know, expressed in no uncertain terms how important it was last week. And and that the price is going up, that we had to get it done. We had to get it done. Uh, people are human. But um, we listened. So, you know, I don't think that by narrowing it down by uh, seven days into this board, as I said, could help in any way speeding up the process of any meetings, we had to do it.
Yeah.
Okay. No, that's fine. No, no, I just, you know, I, I, um, something I said on social media seems to have gotten some attention. Um, again, what I said online was, was frustration and I expressed that in the meeting. Uh, and my colleagues disagreed with me and made a, a point that there was a plan to do something else. So I I'm still confused about what happened to that plan. Um, but last week, my message was the town hall building committee is telling us something. And as I said at the end of the meeting, I believe in the process here. This is the reality. We messed up that process. We just did. Like, we need to just accept that. We've got the town hall building committee now telling us, listen, you know, we can't, we can't move forward after what happened last week. So uh, you know, again, I'm processes. Mike, if the committee that is charged with this is saying we have to regroup and rethink because last week really had an impact, I listened to that. And again, I wanted to get this thing done last week. I want to get it done ten years ago. But I listen to the committees that bring us stuff. That's, that's my, that's my gear here. So, you know, I'm concerned that why are we doing this? Are we doing it because some people yelled at us on, on Facebook? Are we doing it? Or are we doing it because we actually want to see the project happen? And if so, I don't like this at all. But if uh, Mr. Cameron and Mr. uh, Lear are saying that they don't have, that there's a problem, I'm going to listen. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable right now with, with where we're going.
Okay, thank you Cory, Jane and Diane. I didn't see.
Um, that's all right. I'm, I'm trying to you don't have anything nice to say, don't say anything at all. A, a couple of points I want to make. One is that Mr. Lear asked us to affirm the charge, not revisit the charge. We're one and a half million dollars of taxpayer money that has already been spent to get us to this point.
Great.
I also am you know, I I've had to consult attorneys over the years for violating the open meeting law, having conversations or being on social media. That social media is not how we legislate. And it absolutely sickens me that any conversations took place and moved a needle on social media. This government is set up so that we have publicly posted meetings. We inform people of the specifics of our conversations here with each other with the same set of facts that we're all dealing with. And that we have these discussions and we have these deliberations and we charge committees that they can go off and do the work that we can't do. And they work with the staff so that the staff can bring their professional skills to the conversation. And for us to get to the point where we were last week with a shovel-ready project that has been shovel-ready for a number of months without, or years and some, and my mind. Um, you know, what I think, what I'm so afraid of, and I was torn last week too, because knowing that we didn't get these to our committees, to our advisory board and our capital budget committee for corporate deliberation, even though the information was generally out there. Um, because that's what's supposed to happen. And they're supposed to post meeting, you know, agendas that say they're going to talk about this. And people that are interested are supposed to show up and speak their mind, not wait to go on a rant on Facebook. And I was worried that making a call last week to get this on the, on the warrant and then subsequently on a ballot was premature, given the window. And I think that what we did last week was almost sabotaged this project. And I'm very, very concerned. Um, I want to see this done. It has been more than or close to two million dollars over the past ten years for something whose building is falling apart. If you want to tear it down, bring that forward as a, as a plan. But you know, w- we're in a position now where we have a board that wants to do the right thing by the community. I get that. We're all, we're all on the same page about that. But we've just been jockeying this thing back and forth so much that I'm afraid we're not going to be able to deliver. And if we bring it to the voters, I want it to be successful.
Uh, Mark, is your hand up pressure or?
Yeah. No, this is the new one. So
Okay.
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to
To the board who want to speak, so. Go ahead.
To, to Diane's point, this is, this is a, a, a form of government here that is based upon committees. Since these, since this decision to put us back on or propose to put us back on the warrant um, has come about, we have not even had the opportunity to assemble, reassemble our, our group and, and talk about this together and as a committee. We have other committee members on this Zoom right now that aren't able to speak because of open meeting law. And we are, we have not even had the chance to discuss this matter with each other, who have been working on it together for years. And I, I think that that's you know, should be taken into consideration that we should still have that opportunity to do that. We're, we're, we don't ask other boards to make decisions outside of the meeting and trying to do it one phone call at a time with one person at a time.
Good. Back to you, Mark. Jane.
So again, um, if I recall, I mean, the town hall building committee met on Wednesday after our select board vote on Tuesday, expressed their disappointment, frustration, indicated they wanted to move forward. And so it seems the message is the opposite. So I think you have at least some select board members trying to meet you halfway. And, you know, I think I'm just going to have to remind everyone of the reality that we have new select board members coming in in May. This select board is changing. We don't have Cory and Diane who have certainly not Diane, who's been working on this for a decade. Cory, that's been to all of your meetings and presumably supporting this project. There's no guarantees that this is going to go on in the fall. And you shouldn't assume that it's going to, because we, we're going to have a new board. And so I, I think that I think that right now you have a select board that acknowledges the work that you've done that is trying to meet you to see if we can get this project move forward, including with clarity from town meeting. I think the back and forth that you're seeing reflects, yes, that there are doubts about this project. But at the same time, we appreciate the work that's been put in and the money that's been invested. And so at this point, it seems appropriate that town meeting should have a say. And again, we're not going to know what the amount is until days before town meeting. This was always the plan. We don't know the actual amount until the bid comes in. And so we would ha- all have to be sort of waiting anyway to see what was going to happen. And so I would recommend, I will call the question because I do think that we know the issues. Um, we just have to make a decision on whether we're going to move forward with town hall on the warrant.
Question, um, is there a second and right now I noticed that somebody else, Mark Cory, had their hand up earlier.
It was Mr. Evans chair.
Was it Mr. Evans? And he did that before Jane called the vote. So we will hear him. But is there a second for calling?
There was a second.
Call the vote has been called and seconded. Nobody else can speak who would not previously have their hand up. So, Chris Evans.
I would recommend that this board, at a minimum, send it back to town hall building committee. Let them meet as a group and come back to us with their recommendation. At their last meeting, they were informed that this project was off. Uh, to, to Mark's point, they, they can't talk about what, they can't talk about what this new thing is. I think we owe it to them and to the process to I mean, we're already past the point where this can be, you know, ready and, and printed in, in, in the warrant, like with all the recommendations. So I, I, I don't know if that's an amendment or what, but we, they deserve the opportunity to talk about this themselves and come to us with their recommendation. That's my final point.
Cory, as we unfortunately had to remind you before, when a motion is called, when a vote is called, then the only thing they can properly follow is a vote on that motion.
I understand.
Thank you. The, we have a motion to call the vote. It's been made in second. Um, all those in favor of a roll call vote? Who wants to go first?
Paul Grady.
Jane, you'll leave it with them.
Diane. Cory.
Cory Evans, nay, I still don't think we can decide.
Okay, Jack Gray, nay, the vote is called. We have a motion on the floor to, you want to read it again?
I made a motion to pass the town hall on to the warrant, to put the town hall on the warrant to bring the town election. A town, a town hall, a town meeting, I apologize.
Right. And then the motion made in second, if the vote has been called, um, roll call vote, we'll start with
I'll start Paul Grady.
Jane.
Jane, you'll leave it with them.
Diane. Cory.
Can't do it without the vote. Cory, it's next.
Jack Gray, nay, motion carries four to one. By the way, thank you. And I think the town owes the town hall committee, it has been extraordinarily difficult. I've had numerous conversations trying to work something that works, but I think we, everybody in this town should recognize that the hard work that this town hall committee has done in very, very frustrating different opinions, things change, but we do thank you, Phil and, and your whole committee. Okay, moving on.
Jane.
Mr. Jacob.
Um, on, on what the on, on what, you have to identify.
On the ability for capital budgeting, of which I'm a member and advisory committee, for not for us to be able to make our recommendation to town meeting in May. At this point, although um, the town hall question is now on our agenda this morning night, the town hall building committee does not have the opportunity to meet and to come to us with
Mr. Dick, with, with, with all, with, excuse me, with all due respect, you're addressing a motion that is already been decided and voted.
Yeah, I'm not looking to be low or anything. I just want to point out that capital budget certainly needs the opportunity for town hall building committee to come back and, and questions and get it in public with it on getting a recommendation fair with their, their warrant. So I'm just ready to point that we're in problem waters.
Okay. I see we have comments on this, but I want to say the aspect of this on the agenda, we have dealt with this situation and this board has made a decision on that. So we'll allow limited discussion of ramifications in this. But we need the rest of the agenda that we have to go through. But I want people to be able to, to speak and um, but I want to make sure everybody's clear that we're, we're speaking about the general perhaps implementation and and not, I'm not going to allow really annoying discussions because it's already after eight o'clock with a lot of work to do.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I ask you a question, just for process.
We have other people and, uh, when your turn is your turn. Diane.
So if, if this were, if this were in February and we just voted to put something on the warrant, the natural follow-up would be, what are the next steps in terms of getting it to a point where there's recommendations for town meeting? So I think Mr. Dix, I have my hand up too with the same question. And I think now it's very appropriate that it's on the warrant. Um, we voted to put it on the warrant. We haven't voted to recommend it or anything. And now as, as, as backward as this project process is um, it needs to go to the advisory committee. So that when we get to town meeting, we have all heard enough, have had a chance to answer our questions to make a recommendation to town meeting.
Yeah, uh, sure we will, Jane. And then
Yeah, Diane read my mind. I think for capital and for advisory, because recall, we're not going to get the actual bid price until shortly before town meeting anyway, and we'll all have to digest that. I think that that is, um, that I know for myself, I'm inclined to say, let's make our recommendation at town meeting in part to allow advisory and capital to meet in the interim and to get the bid price and go from there. And so I think that um, there was again, always Um, there was again, always gonna be a question until we got the bid, which is only gonna come. A few days from when I understand or a week before a town meeting, so we were. All going to have to be reacting to that new information. Um, because we were trying to get a fresh enough bid right before town meeting. The other thing I want to point out, Mister Chair, we still have to, um. Uh, address the debt exclusion ballot question as well, which will be critical for the funding, and this is the. Second item on the town hall project that we need to do. But I know Mister Evans has a stand up.
I know, I know, that's next. Uh, Cory.
Uh, my question was the same as the others, which was, uh, what's the process now for voting to recommend was, uh, did you intend to? To have us do that today, but I think Diane just said a better process, we'll be ready for advisory and capital to hear it, and then we'll do it on floor to miss, uh, uh, Haley Dibald's point. Is that the process that you're, we're gonna follow?
As you'll notice, if you read the agenda, our next is the review and vote on the ballot questions for the debt exclusion.
I think Cory, you, you're.
Just yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But I think as we go through the warrant article, Jack, we can make that official and have the record reflect that.
You, you're suggesting we do the review and ballot question while we're doing the warrants?
I think so. Why don't I make a formal motion to see if the town, um, the warrant, I, I would. Make a motion, uh, with respect to the, the borrowing article for the town to be put on the warrant that. It reads as to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and or borrow some of money. Of the design and construction of in addition to and renovations of town hall. Including costs incidental or related thereto. And authorize the treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow all or a portion of said sum under. General law, chapter forty-four, section seven, or any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town thereof, provided however. That the appropriation authorized hereunder shall be contingent upon approval by the voters of a ballot question. To exclude the amounts to pay for the bonds or notes authorized for this purpose. From the provisions of proposition two and a half, so called, and further to authorize the select board to execute any and all documents, agreements and instruments. And take all other action necessary or convenient to accomplish the foregoing or to take any action relevant thereto.
I'll second. We have a motion made and seconded and I'll spare everybody the reading, but it's basically to authorize that exclusion. Is there further discussion?
The question just. Because I can't remember. So this is a step, a separate warrant article at town meeting. This is the actual warrant article. This would be the text of the warrant article. So there's only one, there's one this, yes.
Do we have any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, and I'll start with Diane.
All ready, I.
All ready, I, Jack Gray, and I, motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, Jane.
Thank you, Mister Lear. Um, I, I, I have two more.
You all said, I just. You're welcome to stay till eleven, twelve o'clock. But again, Phil, thank you very much. Take your missus out to dinner. Thank you. Happy anniversary.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right.
Thanks, guys.
I, I would move to recommend that as the, the borrowing article for town hall that I just read, that the select board make its recommendation at town.
There's a separate motion.
Separate motion.
No, second.
Right, we have a motion to, um. Have the select board make the recommendation at, uh, town meeting. Do you have any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, Diane.
Thank you.
Cory.
Cory Evans abstained, it's a motion to do nothing.
Jeanne nearly double down.
Jack Grayton, I, motion carries, uh, four eyes, one abstain.
And Jack, one last motion on the debt exclusion ballot question. So this is what the voters. Will see on the ballot at the election. I would move to include a question on the ballot at our annual town election on May thirteenth. To read as follows, shell botanical acid be allowed to exempt from the provision of proposition two and a half, so called, the amounts required to pay for the bonds issued in order. To pay costs associated with the design and construction of an addition to and renovations of town hall.
We have seconded, seconded. The motion made and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call vote, Diane.
Thank you.
Jane.
Jeanne nearly double down.
Cory.
Cory Evans, aye.
All ready, I.
Jack Gray, nigh, motion carries unanimously. Okay. Article four, operating budget. Vote, Chris.
So the, uh. The budget has gone through the, uh, review process. And the advisors recommended it by a vote of eight to nothing. Uh, you have all the materials, um, oh, is Jen, was Jen able to join us, uh? She had some, she got some. Alright, so, um, I can give you some highlights. So, uh, you have to, uh, promote it, yeah, um. The, um, the, the, the school budget is always a big topic, so this year we had some really great conversations very early on. Their overall budget's going up, uh, just two and a half percent for operating budget. But there's two additional one-time cost that I had that are very important. One is, and you'll see in a second, the one-time cost. Three hundred thousand dollars in free cash that will allow for the expenditure, full day kindergarten for the first time next year. Uh, at no cost, uh, to the taxpayer. Um, the theory being that in the second year. All of those kids are not counted, chapter seven, we don't get any aid from them because they're only part-time. When they're full-time, we'll get additional aid in the following year, and according to the school committee estimates or the school official estimates. That will pay for this cost next, next summer. So who will pay for it then? The, the, the chapter seventy money should cover that additional expense, Jack, that's the theory, so. This year, we, we give the one-time cost to cover the difference, and next year we get more state aid. And that, and the projections they've received, the school officials say that, that additional state aid should cover. Go in the future, that, that issue. The other one, one-time expense, the board's already approved, was about two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars from ARPA money that would purchase a new sixth through twelfth grade math curriculum. And then a district-wide arts and music curriculum, both very important, but it's a one-time expense, they buy. Materials, learning tools, and training on all of that, and that will last for a number of years. Um, so that, that combined is actually almost an additional six hundred thousand dollars, it's not in their operating budget, it's. Separate because it's, it's the one-time costs, um. The, uh, so that's the, that's the school budget, so, um, you know, and the details of the school budget are theirs. Um, so, you know, nobody really has any control over it, uh, that, that, that's just, it's just an overall number. Um, and again, I, I, Jennifer's up on the screen, is there anything that you wanna add on that, Jennifer, or is that pretty much good to go?
Um, no, um, that was well said. I'm here to answer questions, the budget is good to go, I think.
Uh, another key element is our assurances, uh, we've, we've done really, really well with mine after a number of years, unfortunately this year not as much. Uh, the, the increase is over eight percent. That's partly post-COVID, a lot of people started spiked up on their healthcare usage. Uh, the other, um, that, that said, we were able to get a one percent reduction in that increase. Uh, because we're participating in a new enhanced wellness program, and trying to create like a wellness coaching and help. Our staff to be more effective and efficient in our use of medical, which is great. Um, and, uh, we've also had developed a little bit of budgetary cushion in that fund over the last couple of years, and that'll probably rest in, so it'll be okay. Well, based on the budget you've got in front of you. Uh, the other big insurance, scrabble, cash, pay, office, top, uh, we're on target with those, um. You know, we're not just effective locally, we've done really well locally, but you know. In storms, disasters, other parts of the country, impact property, and balance matters to us. Um, Maya's very good, and we are very aggressive in pursuing. Uh, discounts and best practices for sales month, so I think we're good on that, that's the only good one. And the other one to note is the pension, we had a very big spike last year. This year it's only been a little bit longer. Um, so, um. So, uh. The, uh, so that actually helped push it, the increases in hospital, because that did not go as much as, into Spain. Otherwise, we kept the, we kept within, within the bounds, um, and, um. Uh, we've started to fund the communication position and the budget going forward next year, uh, coming off a little bit of ARPA money and, uh. Otherwise, you know, we, we, we did eliminate. A position on the town side that didn't fill out, it was Jason Federico, the engineer, which make do for now, maybe do something later. And, uh, on the short term, that's operating on this year, we're, we're gonna hold the filling of a, of a full-time planner until, I think, July. Um, it, we have, we have Lauren on a, an extended period now, she's, she's doing something on the race specialty projects we, we need. And Decider's doing a fine job, so I think, I think we'll be okay, and I think we'll, we'll put that out again. Uh, once we get through that, so, uh, otherwise you have lots of materials. Uh, again, uh, this was advisory asked lots of questions over multiple months. Uh, and, uh, we also follow the select board's guidelines, we're gonna keep with the levy, uh, so I can, to focus on the programs. And again, also to make sure that we have a staff that's capable of acting on the board's priorities. Uh, which means that we have engineers, we have procurement, we have folks available to do sidewalks, to do roads, to do parks, to do fields. To do other building projects, and we're in that place.
Jane. And then Diane.
So.
And then Cory.
So given that we have a lot of infrastructure work that's contemplated, whether it's. You know, town hall and management over that project. Or fields and rack, or roads and sidewalks, we're trying to really aggressively. Do more and build capacity in town to do more, do we feel that on the project management? Procurement and engineering side, we have that in-house capacity. Based on this budget limits, yeah.
So. The answer is yes, and. Should some of these projects move into actual implementation, we'll have to stretch, we'll have to add. Uh, we're already working on that, and the procurement side, we're training us in additional staff to do some of the additional work, so it's not just Michelle and. Limited time, amount of time that I spend doing this. Uh, that's how the project might have decided. Brian has contractor, contracted engineers that work for him. Um, and if we do decide that we need someone on a shorter-term basis. We can bring someone during the year and potentially use some of the funding that will be allocated to these projects to bring someone on for us. So, we are contemplating the need for that, and, and again, that really triggers our weather out the projects. Because if they do, it will start to tax up the assets, and then we'll be able to move on higher, but I don't wanna proactively stick money in there that we don't. You don't really have yet. If there's, if, if that money's being spent, a little bit of extra money will, will work itself out, I think, in the pensions. So I ask you a question.
I guess it's wait and see.
Yeah.
Diane, and then Paul. Paul, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, no, my question, my question's run along the same, the same vein, just in terms of staff capacity, and that's always a question as you're. Trying to reorient different things, but specifically in the planning department, I think I just wanna flag that one. One thing I think is gonna take up an enormous amount of time and resources is dealing with the requirements of the MTA, the, the. Um, stuff, whatever it is, mandates, if you will, and, um. You know, I, I wanna make sure that in this budget at least, because we're gonna have to really start doing. Kind of, and I'm using the word design, not in an architectural sense, but in a, we're gonna have to try to figure out how we're gonna address this in the planning department elsewhere.
So we do have Lauren on contract, and we're gonna, she's so immersed in this for us, I think. That targeted spending will be very effective with her on that, on your project. And actually to follow up on you, with Eugene, let's say we get to Paul, we're gonna do these projects, we're gonna have some free cash. It's like, what, let's say prioritize it one time higher, and we can, so I think the resources will free themselves up in the fall. And we'll, we'll target, we'll target the resources as we need to.
And just a quick little follow-up on all four, if we can find contract services, especially the caliber of the Lauren as opposed to. On slims, you know, or adding long-term staff that we might only need for a couple of years, um, you know.
Thank you, Diane, Paul.
And I just have a suggestion, uh, Chris, I would move on the assumption that these projects are gonna be implemented, that's, that's what I would do. Um, because they are gonna be implemented, that's what we're here for, so I would move on that assumption, I'd plan accordingly, that'd be my advice on that one, so we're not looking around. And we're not hitting a brick wall. And God forbid something didn't happen, we have to reserve that, and I, we know.
But do, do we know that we will stand back? So we, we, by the way, we do talk about this regularly, and about the staff research, Michelle, it's fucking with that.
That's just it, that's my, yeah, that these things aren't gonna happen.
It's just a matter of time, we, we wanna make sure we're ready as it happens.
Thank you. Cory.
I was gonna bring this up when we talked about, um, one-time use flows, but I, but since we're talking about the school commit, school budget. I, I, I think publicly, we need to, um, just recognize and, uh. I appreciate the work that the town manager and, and finance director and anyone else. Who's involved in getting full-day kindergarten funded through free cash. I think, you know, when the school budget first came in and it was really big, it. The fact that, uh, Mister Senior and whoever was involved in the discussions. To get this done, to keep the schools under, under the level, it's a show that we as a town care about. Families and kids, it shows that it's not just a one side of the wall, other side of the wall. I applaud you all for getting this done the way you got it done. And especially because going forward, it frees up chapter seventy money to make this permanent, it's a long time coming. So just, I applaud everyone that was involved in making that policy decision, because it, it was correct in every way, shape and form, so thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Jane.
Um. I was just looking at the, what we projected in the twenty twenty-three budget, what we got for budget for twenty twenty-three, and what we actually expended. Am I reading this correctly, that we budgeted thirty million, but we expended fourteen?
I mean, I, I, you to date, we're, we're not done yet.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, we're not done. So, and, and there's also a, there's a timing thing, so. This was asked, uh, again, Jennifer could jump in anytime, or rather, like, just to pick up, Jennifer did an amazing job, I really wanna publicly thank her. She has been absolutely everywhere, so I, I, I wanna give her all the credit she's doing, it's. So thank you for all, um, and, and Michelle, by the way, who's also working on this stuff all the time. Um, there's always a timing issue, for example, some, some debt comes very early in the year, just the way it's timed, some comes late. Um, some, some expenses, some expenses are, are somewhat consistent, but some are wildly varied.
So I'm, I'm gonna ask Jennifer a question that I know she'll hate, because she's a super precise person. Um, Jennifer, do you have a sense of whether we're gonna come in? Substantially under the budget this year, because we're already in April. We close in July, we're less than half. Um, of the expended budget, and maybe to Chris's point, we front-loaded a lot of expenses, like, you know, we saved a hundred thousand on snow because it was in. Light winter, but I'm just, I'm curious, because I'm just looking at, again. We only have a few more months left in the fiscal year, and we're only at fourteen million, I'm curious.
No. It's, it's a good question, Jean, it's, um, I'm gonna answer it two ways, one of. My answers, it's be, it's hard because this is my first full fiscal year in Cohasset, so I really. Don't have the history in order to answer that questions with specific departments of what might be expended and what might not. But Chris is absolutely right, there are some, um, expenditures that are. You know, front-loaded, or you might see it, um, towards the end of the year, you know, you'll see salaries usually ramping up in the summertime, not so much in Cohasset. But you know, you'll see some temporary personnel being hired before the end of the fiscal year, so then you'll see more expenditures there. So it really is tough to see. And forecast that, and you don't know what might come up, right? Like, right now, we know the DPW budget is short a little bit. Um, we're gonna have to probably fund some of the hauling, um, they just came fully staffed, that's one issue that we're dealing with, how much is that gonna be? It's hard to really project what that expense is gonna be, but I know where we might be saving in other areas, but to put it all together would be. A little bit premature, but it's something that we manage month to month, um, the way I manage the finances is definitely the bottom line, I always look at that, but. But, um, I think with the other one-time expenses, it will definitely set us up well going into the next fiscal year.
Okay, great, thank you. If I could just add to, to that answer, sorry, Jennifer, but on, on the budget that, that is in our packet, it says the last expenditure update was November thirtieth. So, uh, these are pretty much five, six months into the fiscal, so it's, it's not a good thing, but, but I would also say, Jennifer. I, I'm just gonna say this because I can, um, you know, one of the things that is super helpful is, is looking at actuals. And, and of fiscal year actuals, so that we know we're building a budget that's based on. Actual performance as opposed to, um, budget, which is. You know, best guess scenario kind of thing, and it's pretty stable, it, I mean, this, this, that's one thing about an operating budget, there's not a lot of variables in. In here, but anyway, what we're looking at is through November.
Other comments? Any other comments, Chris?
No, uh, yeah, I don't have any other questions, I mean, I, I, again, I, I, I know, uh, we haven't had super in-depth conversations, that said, it's been. Literally hours of co- public conversation that goes in front of advisory. With the schools, um, and so, you know, I, I think it's a pretty. Based on the direction from all of you, it's, it's always a fiscally conservative budget, we try to make sure that we're tight. Uh, we're spending all this money of value to the. Uh, we're spending all this money at value to the best value way. At the same time, we want to make sure the services are provided well, um, a couple of, a couple of increases in here include cybersecurity is a lot. You know, Ron is on a, extremely good job in keeping the town safe. Uh, IT, and when I got here, we didn't have an IT network, now we do, we have a state-of-the-art system network with fiber, and we were able to support government, we really support learning from home uh, and virtual, and all the, all the work from some schools now, all the digital learning that was not in existence eight years ago, just wasn't happening. So, uh, well, I know there's more increases that we have in there because we want to keep the security tight, make sure that we're safe. Um, so, uh, you know, a- and again, we're also looking at hiring, you've heard Chief Doc, right, Chief Quigley? Um, we're struggling, we're working really hard to fill these police and fire positions, that will take down the overtime. Which will address another article. So, but otherwise, I took, I think it's a good budget, a lot of people's department, the departments are very serious about this, and and I'm, I'm grateful for participation, again, also all the work Jennifer's jumped in. She's, uh, you know, she's, she's challenged, you know, historical assumptions, which is great, she's, and we, we had some good discussions. And as a result, I think we have a pretty good budget, and um she says it's good, I'm, I'm good, so.
Okay.
I move to um, make a, that, that the select board recommends, we need Article Four operating budget to
second. The motion made in second for Article Four, the operating budget. So any, uh, further discussion? Hearing no further discussion.
Hey, Jack.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, the only discussion that I would add on is, I think at the end, we need to discuss the article numbers, and what order we want to put these in, so I just want to put that out. Yeah, I'm fine with moving forward, I just wanted to.
I was kind of bringing that up, too, thank you for that.
Okay, uh, roll Paul, well, Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Jane, I did.
Paul.
Over here.
Cory.
Cory Evans Eye.
That great nine motion carries unanimously.
Just so you know, Article Five at the moment, they're on the unpaid bills, so if there's no unpaid bills going in the meeting, it'll definitely postpone, we're very happy, uh, that's the case.
Article Six.
So we, we have supplemental appropriations, and Jennifer's available to answer questions, so uh, you've heard that we have had, the easy one is the transfer to pay, we always move the money that comes in from the fees, we send that to one four three TV. So that's the number as it is today of the last year. Um, it, there's a, um, uh, there's been a fair amount of litigation involving planning and zoning. And we've been very aggressive on our recent council, uh, at the right time, I think it's been successful, it was a big win by the council, we had a dad on a very important planning case, and another one that looks like a victory is looming. So it's been money well spent, there's also been doing, they've done a lot of in-depth work with committees this last year. We're gonna have to, I think, again, and plus, we're initiating contracts, we have all the contracts up, and we have all of that discussion, so we're gonna have to plant down, uh, this next year, I think it should be better, this was a, a little bit more of a bigger year. Fire is over, and that's, and you've heard Chief Doctor, perhaps he has uh, even more is on the police side, we've had literally five empty position, five uh, I went empty, but uh, open positions because of injury, or we had, we had one person leave us, and somebody was retiring. And it's really been hammering the police overtime, because there's minimum manning and staffing that has to happen there. Plus, as you, I think I'm seeing, we've had a couple of issues this last uh, January, December, um, and uh, we're hoping to get some reimbursement potentially, but we can't guarantee that, we have to pay those, so uh, Jennifer is concerned, we said, let's put the money in here right now, so this is free cash. Um, and this will, will plug, uh, these, and if, if for whatever reason, we don't end up needing this money, it'll just fall back out to free cash for next year, so it's, uh, you know, this will cover us and keep us all.
Thank you.
When you say fall out.
So let me explain, so let's say, we put three twenty-five, let's say we only need three hundred, the twenty-five thousand will just roll, if we don't need it, into next, it'll just free cash next.
But that means we lock up free cash for this upcoming year, including for potential projects that are out there.
Well, once free cash is certified on fall, it becomes available again, so, yeah, so.
That's what I.
Yeah, free cash gets certified on fall, as Jennifer said, sometime, you know, October, November, depending on what happens with the state, so yeah, it wouldn't be very long.
Okay, Jane.
Um, you know, I would just say, and this is something that I think the Cohasset Financial Planning Committee needs to continue really narrowing down, is from my perspective, I think that we should get into our habit of disciplining ourselves with free cash to um, use it for capital items to begin more aggressively addressing our capital stabilization fund, I think we use it for a lot of recurrent operating expenses. And um, I realize why we do that, for example, in the context of overtime, but I do think moving forward, we need to look more seriously and intend to do so this summer, as we continue these meetings, with really trying to figure out how to use free cash to address what we know are shortages in our capital stabilization fund, or not necessarily just the fund itself, but really how we appropriately plan for our capital needs, so um, I wanted to just put that out there, because I do see we have a lot of non-capitalist expenses listed here for free cash.
That's the next point. We need to be proactive. We're kind of spoiled with all the extra money that's flowing around. Um, I think that's going to end soon. So we the more we've been controlling, the better, uh, other comments? Okay, let's move on to the next. Okay, can, uh.
I, I need that we make a recommendation to, um, I'm needing to support supplemental appropriation for fiscal twenty twenty-three.
Motion made in second at all this. Diane.
I.
Cory.
Cory Evans Eye.
Jane.
Can you really double that?
Well, already I.
That great, no.
Article seven, there's just two transfers that are going to end this year. Uh, our stimulus funds are, 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 the general stimulus is fine, we're, we'll, we'll talk more about capital as we come into the fall, uh, it was a big that, uh, amount put in, in the, this past fall. So this is money that's going from the water budget, the water stabilization, capital stabilization, and money going from sewer revenue, sewer capital stabilization, which maintains their ongoing uh, funding, which is great.
Discussion.
I move to recommend the stabilization and other special funds currently designated as Article Seven.
I'll second it. Uh, Article Seven's been made in second, is there further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Jane, you're like double that.
Well, already I.
Cory.
Evans Eye.
That great nine motion carries. Article eight.
Uh, this is the capital budget article, uh, I, I, I mean, do you want to say anything more, Michelle, do you want?
Oh, I would just like to say that, um, we should hold on our recommendation of five and number eight, uh, for the staff and offer a draw by the capital budget meeting, yeah, on the evening, several tomorrow. Um, whether it was these under.
What I will say is it's been an intense process, I know a member, uh, Mr. Dick is here as well, I, I a, a great conversations, intense conversations, uh, I think, uh, we're at the point where I think it'll all be fully funded as a come on, I, fingers crossed, um, you know, uh, fingers crossed, uh, we have to find a little tiny bit of money, which I think we'll be able to come, also our last slide forward at a future meeting, um, we'll plug in a little more money for the, uh, uh, the interactive smart pass, um. And, uh, that said, this is a, this really carved down to like the most essential items that need to be done. And these are that, uh, and, uh, again, th- there's things that are not funded that we would like to have funded, and we just couldn't, and then you know, you got to live in the new means, so Chris.
Mr. Dick is here, I would love to hear a little bit of your insight.
I absolutely echo, um, what Chris said, and that we really got down to what was most essential. Um, there was a lot of discussion and cooperation with our managers' office, they were so, um, and working with us and with Chris, of course. Um, to find the balance.
Well done, and thank you, thank you, Michelle, again. So, Jane.
Um, I would move to recommend the Article Eight Capital Improvements Budget as to project number one, two, three, four, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, and I understand that like town hall, five and eight are going to be decided at town meeting, is that the?
Uh, yeah, those, well, hopefully the capital will get the votes on five and eight before, and if you do meet next week, we might be able to get the recommendations in, in this section. If the board has me next Tuesday. If we get, we make a timing, we can make edits at the last.
We have a motion.
I just made.
Um, all those in favor?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Jane, you're like double that.
Well, already I.
Cory.
Cory Evans Eye.
That great nine, motion carries unanimously.
You already voted nine, and now we're down to, uh, Article ten, and there's a two one-time costs. One is, I should say, it should actually, it shouldn't be uh, it's, it's one that just I see security fifty thousand dollars, that's some addition on capital stuff that we had to get done. Uh, that's part, that's linked, the worth of capital's thing that's separately funded. Um, and then fully can, it's a strange fast loss, totally comparable, and this way, um, yeah, that possible, so those are the two items. And I, our account advisory voted eight to nine.
Discussion. Internet motion.
Question to approve Article Ten, well, what's currently designated is Article Ten Allocation of Funds for One-Time Costs. Question.
Motion to, uh, uh, made a second into allocation of funds, Article Ten. Um. Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Can you really double that?
Well, already I.
Cory.
Evans Eye.
That great nine motion carries unanimously.
Um, you've already voted Articles eleven and twelve.
So we're thirteen.
Thirteen is community preservation, based on again. Tonight, the board's vote changes, so there was, there's another project that they, that CPC did vote on for one million dollars for town hall. Uh, which needs to be put back into this, because as a, going into you want, it, it wasn't a relevant vote anymore, because it was the project, that is project, so that's back in here, um. The others are just statutory, that ten percent of the estimated revenues amongst those categories, um, open space, store, office, education, storage, and then store with CPC votes five percent administrator, they don't use it, it just rolls back on.
So, so Chris, on the million that CPC voted for, is there any special additional language, and we need to put in here to reflect that it's will need to be bonded as well?
Um, yeah, I, I, we do have to figure that out, uh, yes, and yes, I, 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 I don't um, there, there, there might be sufficient funds, um, in the, with the money that's coming in, and the money that's already in their accounts, but I, 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 to pay cash, that's what CPC wants to do. They did not vote on, but I recall, it is running the amount. Uh, so I think that would have to be clarified by the town meeting, so, um, okay, this time.
Diane.
So my question is, for this particular article, knowing that CPC I believe has made a, a vote to recommend a million dollars towards town hall, we've actually just added town hall. I think we need to get town hall into this article before it goes out, I don't know that we can amend that, that motion, or maybe.
Well, again, it, it, yes, I remember the, the, what you're really voting on is the top part, the information summary can always change, right? So, so the, the projects can change, you want to put people on notice, and we will put that back in, it was a vote, right? And then the project's relevant, that actually happened, we'll put that back.
So what's the, what's the operational process to do that?
So I guess I would move to, uh, I'll try a motion, I would move to approve Article Thirteen, um, which is currently identified as the Community Preservation Committee as drafted in the warrant we're looking at. Um, but with the additional recommendation of a million dollars for town hall added, and consistent with CPC's recommendation.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, if you made in seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Jane, you're like double that.
Well, already I.
Cory.
Evans Eye.
That great nine motion.
You voted fourteen, fifteen, it says being, uh, Article Seventeen, you heard a presentation on it, the municipal stormwater bylaw. Um, and advisory, um, they did vote. It's, it's missing from here, but they voted eight to nothing to support this. And Conservation also voted unanimously to support that, but I don't know what the final number was on that. Because they recommended this in the first place, um. So this is good to, to vote, um, a- again, I, I don't have any other you know, these are technical, I think, Jack, you're such a bad expert on this, so, uh, still want to, well, that's good.
Motion.
I would move, sorry, one down. Just going to say, uh, I would move that the select board recommends Article Seventeen, Stormwater Management Bylaw Regulations.
Second.
So.
Motion made in seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Jane, you're like double that.
Well, over here.
Cory.
Evans Eye.
That great night, motion carries unanimously, and the last article here is the current Article Eighteen, is the publication of building permits, of issued building permits. Uh, this is that quick change we made based on what we found, um, advisory loaded to supporting for nothing. Um, so it's good to go, I focus on as well.
The motion.
I would move to recommend Article Eighteen, Publication of Building Times of Issues.
Uh, Article Eighteen made in seconded. Any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, Diane.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jane.
Jane, you're like double that.
Paul. Already I.
Cory.
Cory Evans Eye.
Jack, great night, motion carries unanimously.
Uh, before you wrap this down, um, unless you're difficult, if you want to give some direction or thought about where to um, put this town in a while.
Sure, if okay with you, Jack, I just wanted to propose to the board that, um, we have some really big articles, namely town hall and the zoning articles. And I think that these are articles that we want to make sure we have forms for, I think it's very important that we do that, um, and so I would be inclined to move these higher up in the warrant to make sure that we can get the people to vote on them, I, I want to make sure we have forms for everything, but certainly for this, I'm a little worried about leaving zoning at the very end. Um, uh, I, I think that we, and, and also town hall, I think we want to ensure that, you know, maybe these are moved up after Article Three, um, I think people are going to stay for the operating budget to ensure we can run the town, people are going to understand the importance of that. And so strategically, that's just something I wanted to put out there.
And she, you would also put zoning right after that.
Uh, you know, I, I could be misreading the room, but I think the zoning articles are actually going to be not very controversial, um, at the end of the day.
I think that there's a lot of having been on the zoning bylaw. Um, there's a lot of consensus among stakeholders in zoning, and I think they're pretty happy with what's going on, and I see Cory was got to stand up, so I think it probably will be makes sense to make sure, we want to make sure that gets passed and gets before people leave. Um, so I, I think, Jane, your suggestion makes a lot of sense, and and, uh, Cory, and then Paul. Cory.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm reflecting on it a little bit, I mean, you know, one thing that does happen at town meetings, after a big discussion, everyone kind of goes, huh, right? And sometimes after those big discussions, it's good to go home. So, uh, kind of having a half hour, you know, floor fight, and then trying to talk about you know, the Veterans Valor Act, I think kind of does a disturbance to the Veterans Valor Act, we can get that done real fast. So I, I'm not sure moving that up to I don't know if that really buys us much, I don't think, I mean, we can, we get through the first ten real fast. I mean, again, this is, uh, something that, that the town manager and other people taught me about when I was trying to, uh, campaign for the moving up of the remote voting article, and you know, again, after seeing how, what that, what happened at town, town meeting floor, you know, that was kind of, it made an impression upon me that after we get through big topics, we're going to expend a lot of energy, I don't want us to be you know, trying to also get through stuff that's really simple, so I'd, I'd be more comfortable putting it you know, after sixteen, because I think we can fly through the first sixteen real quick. And I don't want to kind of mess up that momentum.
Well, um, I'd be more inclined to agree with Jane, is I would get ones that would be, of the, uh, maybe his points, town hall, get it up and see where it goes with that. And so it's fine where it is, uh, to a degree, maybe a little further. But I do agree with Cory, I'm a veteran of valor, I can get some, some, get some new capital allocation fines. You know, to move that back down to kind of the final round.
If, if, if I, Diane, then.
You might be saying what I'm going to say.
Okay, you, you, you.
You're the expert, though.
Oh, well, if you get.
No, what I was going to say is, I mean, typically we get through all the funding articles. No, what I was gonna say is, I mean, typically, we get through all the funding articles, because those are. Ultimately, the main reason we're there is that poorly, the budget is obviously the most important, but so maybe. You know, I don't wanna move anything above. The budget articles, but the question is, what's the budget? It's like maybe capital and stuff, and some of the supplementals can come after. Um. I don't, typically, it's just get through all the financial articles, then the big. The big chunks, which would be town hall, I think town hall has to be positioned with CPC.
Yeah, the, and I understand everyone's points. I, historically, again, I've done, this is kind of my. I think seventeenth town meeting or eighteenth town meeting now, um. The 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 group specialists, uh, getting through the financial articles is historically just been in the way it's done, and it gets it done. And and considering there's really no controversy on the budget issue or any of that, you should be able to move through those fairly quickly, get a momentum. So again, where you draw the line, whether it's after capital budget, just. And nine is a pretty routine article, and even ten is not that, but ten is, and is kind of important, because it's funny to pull the kindergarten. You could probably get through those in a half an hour, and then you could, if you wanna move the zoning up to that, get those two through those, and then come back. The town hall, and then run through the rest of them, if the building permits is the last fall of the war, I don't think that's the end of the world. Um. Uh, that's, I I do, I would say that just based on the history and. My conversation with the moderator of the years, it's just great to be able to get some of that stuff. Done, and play the operating budget, some of those things really quickly, because they're so important, get the momentum building. And then, uh, but again, it's it's your warrant, it's not mine.
Okay, so Jane, what what was your suggestion involving Jane? So what if we do that, Chris? Say after, that's somebody starting the allocation of funds for kindergarten, that's, that's number ten.
Yep.
Then you put in something like town hall after that zoning. Now, um.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And you're making kind of a. Lead in some good things, hit it, town hall. And then we do. Good, do the wrap up. Jane.
Uh.
Then Diane.
I think, yeah, I was just looking at an article, well, because we wanna put CPC to Devon's point with town hall. I'd be, again, I, it's a tricky situation, but um, I'd be inclined to do town hall right after the operating budget. I think those are the two biggest financial impacts to this town, so. If we did town hall after the operating budget, then CPC. You know, we'd have those big critical financial discussions, and then everything would sort of fall quickly, and hopefully we'd go straight into the zoning bylaw.
So town hall, CPC, and zoning. I mean, possibly town hall five and.
Yeah, five and six.
I would go with that.
My only issue with that is, again, I think like the capital improvements budget stabilization, those are all annual operating. Decisions that we make, so they're kind of, they're outside of the, the annual operating budget, but they're part of the NY twenty four budget package. So, I I think I would, you know, put town hall at maybe article eleven, then CPC.
I think the. Town hall, I think we really do want to have that front and center, it's gonna be a big issue. Um. Nobody knows how it's gonna play out, but I think we want people there. So I, and I hear what you're saying, Diane, it makes a lot of sense.
Actually, the annual business first is kind of my thing.
Yeah.
But.
You know, you obviously, that if I may, is. You know. We want more participation at town meeting. Um, we do, we don't have. Extremely robust participation, um, so. You know, to get them in the door, and they start listening, maybe, I'd like to see what the follow-ups, so I would agree with Jane on after we have operating budget. We put town hall and CPC. In there, and we moved on. I I personally think you wanna see something that's gonna keep you interested in it. Gee, I wanna engage more on the top. I'm gonna stick around as he was coming after, because. You know, that was sure interesting, regardless, which, you know, whatever way it goes, whatever the town decides, um. Oh, I think I would agree with that. Yeah, and I, I I think it's very important that we have a robust vote. For town hall, because we do not want a situation where people say, well, it passed or it didn't pass, but most of the people that left. So I think it's very important for the unity of the, and the health of the uh, post. Vote discussion that we have in early, so. Anyway, other further discussions, we just.
So s- so is this what you're looking at? Then it would be. Um, the first four, and then article five becomes town hall, article six becomes CPC. And then you run the next group, um. As of, right through ten, or right through twelve, I guess. And then, and then you pick up. The zoning after that, and then finish out with some routine. I mean, there there's, there's something to be said for a break between intensity too, because if you go away from town hall to zoning, you could end up just, you know, you. Town meeting is a flow, I mean, you've seen it, you know. Boom, boom, approval, 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 because they're they're well vetted and conversed. Uh, so you you give a little distance between the zoning and then the town hall debate, does that make some sense?
Uh, I, are you suggesting we add town hall, CPC, and as five and six, and then we just keep the remainder?
No, no, I, if you, did you wanna move the zoning up further, because they're fairly non-controversial. I don't know that you're gonna have a lot of.
Uh, well, Paul makes a good point too, about wanna make sure people stick around for the Veterans Valor Act, which again, is completely non-controversial. I mean, mo- most of what's before here is essentially article seven through. Sixteen, I think, are gonna slide through, so.
I didn't even say it, ten, eight, I think.
Yeah, and even, I think the zoning, so maybe we're overthinking this, maybe we just do town hall at five and six.
And then.
And then just keep the structure.
Remember, you can always, I, it's not recommended, you can always change the order at time before there's a reason to. I mean, it's it's messy.
So do we have a motion that we have a consensus on?
I would move to include town hall and article five and CPC at article six.
Second. We have a motion made in seconded to uh, five and six of town hall, um, any further discussion? There are no further discussion. Diane. Already. Corey.
Raven's name.
That great night. Okay. Um.
Anything else on here? I don't think so. No, you have the one stop, congratulations.
Yeah.
Very good. Oh, well, oh, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you have a motion there, Jack, you need to now. All for the. The publication and. I just, that's true.
We're not missing any recommendations.
No, okay.
Other than town hall.
Okay. I'd like to, uh, motion to close inside the warrant for the annual town meeting on Monday. May first of twenty twenty three, and approve the posting and publication of it.
Second.
We have a motion made and seconded to close the motions, warrant for the annual town meeting. May first of twenty twenty three, and approve the posting, publication of it. Is there any further discussion? There are no further discussion, roll call, Diane.
Diane Kennedy.
Jane.
She nearly double that.
Paul. Corey.
Brayevan's eye.
Jack, great night, motion made, and passed, and then, so I'm gonna pass this around, for you to all sign. Are you available, Corey, at all in the next couple days, or are you not available?
Uh, I should be home late, late tomorrow night, if you want to swing by first thing Thursday, does that help you?
Yes, that'd be awesome.
Okay, yeah, I'll do that.
And it's been passed around, it's just, it's two different versions of it, we're just being ultra safe.
No, I guess.
Yes. No. Yeah, okay, well, yeah. Good, good. Yeah.
All right, moving on to the agenda. We have on the agenda a discussion of a CPC fund request. To some extent, that's new, because we just approved the fund request. I see the chairman of the uh. CPC is here.
Why that?
But we just voted on what's on your, on your budget, is there anything you need to add? Okay, thank you. Yeah, right. Town manager update.
I'm gonna, we've done so much, I'm gonna pass.
All right, select word comments. Diane. You wanna comment, or Corey, who wants to?
No, just congratulations for the rotary, for the the road race, it's a great day, and it's. Getting us around, so that's it.
Very good. It's moved, we passed the budget already, and they don't wanna speak. Oh, yes, can your business. Um, so, comments, um, Diane spoke about rotary, do you have a comment? Uh, no, again, I wanna, you know, I wanna thank her, so I wanna thank you for firing the program here. And so, thanks to them. I'd also like to thank the board, to move something ahead, getting the ball rolling. Very good, thank you, Paul. Corey?
Yeah, no, I, uh, same thing, I'm glad to move this up forward. Uh, I wanna apologize to people that were looking for. Playgrounds, fields, courts, all this stuff. Um, I also wanna apologize to the town hall building committee that we. You know, certainly took their legs out from under them, and I I hope they can recover. Um. I know that there's some discussion about next week, I'll be in Asia next week, so I cannot attend a meeting if we get one, just to let you all know. Thank you.
Jane.
Um, yeah, so I just wanna say, as it relates to fields and courts and playgrounds, that. You've not been forgotten, we are gonna work hard to get this done in a few months, particularly once we can better understand free cash. To try to hopefully fund some of these projects. Um, we'll be trying to work with CPC collaboratively to see what we can fund to, short of. Of tax increases, um, and so we're gonna continue working to try to make progress on this. I know that, uh, it's disappointing for a lot of people who are working hard. But we're not gonna stop working towards what we know we need to do, which is, um. You know, what we are attempting to do with town hall as well.
Thank you, Jane. I guess my, uh, comment, I kinda would say that we want everybody in town to know that. We have a long and large backlog of of things that need to be taken care of, that can't be. Um. That can't be done easily or quickly, and they're going to cost money that can't be avoided. Very difficult for this board to handle these in a way that's fair to everybody. Um, in town hall, it was a little unique in that it was only one that was really close to being shovel, shovel ready. I know there may be some discussion, but it was far and away the closest. I think it's healthy that we're gonna finally, um, make a decision. And I think we need to be very appreciative of the work that the town hall committee has made. There has been a fairly high degree of. Commentary, which has been some personally destructive. And, you know, people wanna say, well, we shouldn't do that. Well, this is democracy. Because people say stuff, they get upset about it, not the end of the world, if you can't. Stand the fire, get out of the kitchen. Um, but people have a right to speak, and they have a right to speak passionately, passionately. And sometimes, uh, in our, in articulate speaker, who's clumsy, may say something we all need to listen to. But in any way, the system is working, we have a very difficult, and I want people in the community to know. These are not easy and simple questions, and they will not go away. And I will congratulate this select board for taking a forthright and honest and good view. And not avoiding this, and sometimes we don't make friends, but we will, and we are making progress. That being said, um. We have approval of the minutes for three, seven, twenty three, a motion.
A motion.
Second. A motion made in second for approval of the minutes for, uh, three, seven, twenty twenty three. Any further discussion? All those, uh. Diane.
Diane Kennedy.
Paul.
Already.
Jane.
She nearly double that.
Corey.
Brayevan's eye.
That great night, motion is to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made adjourned, um, of, uh, roll call, Diane.
Diane Kennedy.
Corey.
Brayevan's eye.
Jane.
She nearly double that.
Paul.
Already.
That great night, we are adjourned.